I'll be ready.
Yeah, ready.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's April 5th, 2022 city council meeting. I'd like to ask that everybody please silence any electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to pray with me, please. Father, we come before you this evening thanking you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Lord, as we begin to enjoy the essence of spring and the many wonderful events associated with warmer weather, please keep us mindful that not everyone has the opportunity to enjoy these most basic aspects of life. Many throughout our city and throughout the world are dealing with circumstances that sometimes seem impossible to understand and the burden too big to bear. Lord, help us be mindful that through you, all things are possible. We ask that you'll shower your love, your grace, and your mercy upon those in need, that they may experience the enjoyment of the earth you created and the basic joys that many of us take for granted. And Lord, we're so very thankful for our dedicated city employees. The city is not immune to labor shortages that our country is experiencing, and this shortage places an immense burden on our existing staff. Father, we're thankful for their commitment to making Burlington a thriving city, to keep our citizens at the forefront of all of their activities and endeavors. Please give us the strength and the dedication to stay on task as we work through these times, and may all feel loved and appreciated as they truly are. Father, we ask that you give this council guidance in all things before us as we conduct our city's business this evening. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
At this time, we have a special proclamation, the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April the 10th through the 16th of 2022. And this celebrates and honors the service of our professional staff, the telecommunicators of Burlington and Graham Communications Center. So at this time, I think we have Stephanie Chatten and Captain Todd along.
All right.
So I'm going to read the proclamation and let you guys say a few words. The City of Burlington, North Carolina, proclamation recognizing National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 10th through 16th, 2022. Whereas this week is a time to show our appreciation and to recognize that our health, safety, and well-being are often dependent on the commitment and steadfast devotion of public safety telecommunicators. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical service, or other critical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, prompt response of the telecommunicator to answer an emergency or non-emergency call for service to the patch's law enforcement, firefighters, and medical personnels critical to the sanctity of life and the preservation of property and the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Burlington Graham Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are dedicated men and women who are professional staff and are more than anonymous voices on the telephone line. They are the first, first responders, and are much crucial contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators have assisted with the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, the work of these unseen heroes is invaluable in emergency situations. And each of these dedicated men and women deserves our heartfelt appreciation. Citizens place their trust in these individuals, not just this week, but every day of the year. And whereas each telecommunicator exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job assisting those in need. Now therefore, in recognition of the men and women of the Burlington Graham Communications Center, whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens in the City of Burlington and Graham safe, I'm Mayor Jim Butler, on behalf of the Burlington City Council, hereby proclaim April 10th through the 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Burlington. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all so much, and feel free to say a few words.
I think I'm denominated by Manager Chapman to say a few words.
How you doing, man?
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Good to take you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. First of all, thank you, council members. It's an honor to be here. I can't say enough about Manager Chapman and the many women who work in the BCC. I've been fortunate to be their captain for the last three years, and I've had the opportunity to work with each and every one of them. And the work they do on a daily basis is a thankless job. The men and women in there answer the phone on a regular basis, and they're truly that lifeline to keeping everyone in the community safe and police officers as well. So thank you again. We truly appreciate this. This is a small token of what we can do to show our appreciation to them.
We thank y'all. We appreciate yous.
Thank you.
And I invite you all to come out next week and visit our center and say hello to the telecommunicators. Thank you.
She'll put the work.
Next item on our agenda is the ceremonial oath of office for city clerk. At this time, I'd like to recognize our newly appointed city clerk Beverly Smith to take the oath of office. I have the pleasure of ministering.
Can I bring up my two biggest fans?
Come on.
She wants to talk about Tommy.
You're going to have to tell me how to do this.
I'll repeat after you. I did this a lot.
So you've got the instructions, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state my name.
I, Beverly Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
Or the government thereof.
Or the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintaining and defending.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will, will, and truly execute.
And that I will, will, and truly execute.
The duties of the office of city clerk.
The duties of the office of city clerk.
For the city of Burlington.
For the city of Burlington.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So don't be done.
So don't be done.
Congratulations.
Great to meet you.
All kind of hooky going on, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Good to see you, sir.
How's it going?
Chief, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, David.
Be open to see.
How you doing, Jay?
Thank you.
Y'all don't need to leave, y'all can stay.
They're getting early start.
At this time, we have the code of ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest by city clerk Beverly Smith.
And the council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any single conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
No. Next item is the approval of minutes, March 15th, 2022, city council meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion of second.
Second.
A second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is additions to the agendas discussed at the work session last night, the consent agenda. There's items C, D, and E, as spelled out, and then new business item three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion, a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is the adoption of the agenda with the add-ons.
Move, we adopt the agenda with the additions.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda spelled out. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A is to approve the notice of intent to adopt a resolution authorizing the extension of the lease of city-owned surplus real property to American Tower Asset Sub LLC at the May 17th, 2022 city council meeting. Item B is to adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donated fitness equipment and enter a product donation agreement between the City of Burlington and Dick's Sporting Goods, Inc., for the purpose of expanding the wellness and fitness of employees of the Burlington Fire Department, contingent upon final approval of the contract terms by the legal department. Item C, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for the April 19th, 2022 city council meeting to consider a non-contiguous voluntary annexation of a parcel located at Old Glenco Road, PID 140418. Item D, to authorize an agreement with Transdev Services, Inc., upon concurrence from the city attorney and finance and risk management director to provide fixed route and ADA parat transit services within the Burlington Graham urbanized area from July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2025, with two one-year options. Item E, to approve the following proposed updates to the stormwater drainage policy. A, increase the city participation and cap for each property from 50% resident to 80% city, 20% resident. B, increase city's cap per property from 10,000 to 20,000. And C, include language to allow the city to participate in stabilization of streams by applying bioengineering solutions. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
We approve the foregoing consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Under new business item one, at this time, city council will consider request from St. Mark's Church to hold an immersion baptism service in city-owned Lake Camac at the Marina on August 28th, 2022, from 1:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m., contingent upon meeting all requirements of the special event permit application process. At this time, I know Jessica Flake was going to be with us, but she's not.
She had a family emergency.
So we have Kaitlin Brown, so.
This is a recurring event. It's happened, I think, for at least the past 10 years at Lake Camac, and they are asking to use it again on August 28th.
I take it from their information in our packet, nothing's any different than what you took.
Nope, it's the exact same as previous years.
Okay. Any other comments? I'll make a motion that we approve the utilization of the Lake Camac. Just have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item two, at this time, city council will consider approve the use of Lake Camac for swimming portion of the 17th Annual Buckner Mission Van Triathlon hosted by Front Street Methodist Church on July 23rd, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., contingent upon meeting all requirements of the special event permit application process. At this time, we'll call on Kaitlin again.
Just like the St. Mark's baptism, this is a recurring event. It's been happening for at least 17 years. This is David Hoxsey with the Front Street United Methodist Church. If you have any questions.
This is my first year as director of the race, so that's the only big change.
I think it's a requirement whoever makes the motion has to participate.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
David, we do appreciate you all doing this.
Thank you.
This is a wonderful event.
Yep. Item three, city council will consider approving the following two reclassifications for organizational adjustments with planning and transportation departments. A, reclassify the director of planning and transportation position level 42 to director of transportation level 40. And B, reclassify the principal planner position level 31 to planning director level 40. At this time, we'll call on interim city manager David Cheek.
Thank you, mayor, council. Over my past several weeks in the organization, a couple of departments have called my attention with vacancies where, one, everybody does the police department, and two, the planning department. I understand the planning department was staffed fully several months ago, but at this time, it's down to two people. And talking with Nolan and Mike over the past weeks, it seems good to us to recommend that these departments, Mike has been managing both departments. He spends two days in transportation and three days in planning. So he's juggling a lot. And the staff, I think, needs more consistent, more permanent direction than that. So in our discussions, we feel like we need to go back the way it used to be. Several years ago, I probably had a planning director and a transportation director. Mike's done a great job running these two departments the last four years, saved the city a bunch of money, not having two positions. But this area, as you know, it's a huge UDO we have now, with all the development going on in the city, a lot of activity. We need somebody that's focused and spending full time. The staff needs somebody they look to that is focused. So it's not much of a cost difference in the long run, and it's, I believe Nolan, you agree, it's the thing we need to do, Mike and I'll, that's why we're here. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have, but this will set that part of the organization in a better direction, I think.
Well, I do recall when we transitioned to the current structure, it was interim for a while. And then I think, like a lot of things, during COVID, with all the distractions and everything that goes on, you just sort of put things by the side because you're dealing with one fire drill after another. And then the next thing you know, what you intended way back when has morphed into something else. That's probably what we're experiencing a little bit. So it's good that you guys sit down and talk about that, and I think it's a good direction for the department. Any questions from council?
It's, obviously, the economy is a complicated situation now in terms of housing impact on residents, but also the opportunity for growth in our community is there at a level that we've never seen before. To take advantage of that, I think you have to be somewhat creative, and also you got to focus, you got to have people in these positions to give interested clients the opportunity to present information to them, to vet it, and then get the best product on the table for us and for our community going forward. So, you know, I believe where we are now, this is a request that we should honor and approve. It's one that, I think we're not doing ourselves, we're not doing the city any good by not doing this. It's that important now. This is where we, if we're going to step up and try to grow this community in terms of its tax base, in terms of jobs for residents, you've got to have strong professional staff in planning and development. We're very fortunate to have some administration that's very strong, and obviously Mike and Nolan. But I think we really need to honor this request.
So the, what's that, a motion?
I'll let him make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. At this time, during our public comment period, I think, city clerk, there were no comments in public. So council comments. I do have one thing real quick. During the work session last night, we were provided, and I want to be sure that we talk about this public as much as possible, but we were provided some presentation by Duke Energy explaining the purple light phenomenon that everybody's, seems like my phone's rang off the hook about that more than perhaps any other thing. But it was a very good presentation. This is obviously Duke Energy's, the vendor that supports the city on this, but it's a defective light unit. And I know our public information team did or has issued a public notice. We did.
We have to put it out.
Okay, we've had to put it out. So it's got a website that you can visit to log in your address, put in your address if you're experiencing this issue. So in most cases, I think they said they could replace the unit within three or four days, assuming it wasn't a whole street out, and that way they may have to do a wholesale change. So I did want to mention that again because that has been a fairly well-discussed topic around town. And then the second thing on my list is I would like to congratulate David Cheek. He's made it through his first month almost, pretty close. So the successful completion of his first month, I think you get a plaque for that. Yeah. And just let everybody know that plans are underway to finalize the process for hiring our new city manager, and council's been working with HR and amongst ourselves and the team on really developing the process and to keep it community and employee-led as much as possible with the council's direction. And hopefully, it's our goal to get a full update and rundown of what this is going to look like at our next council meeting. So we look forward to that. So that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments. Kathy and I were met with several people in reference to the homelessness situation downtown, the public safety aspect of that. Chief Long was involved, Morgan was involved, Jay Baker from Allied Churches, Heidi Moore, you know her way, and several other staff members. But it was a very good, talkative conversation. We brainstormed a lot, some of the things that that committee had worked on before, other things that were new, and just a few things, trying to increase the lighting downtown in some of the corridors that are a little darker than others, maybe an increase in cameras downtown in their corridor, corridor, excuse me, depot cameras and lighting evaluation, things like that. I think that we're making progress. I think that eventually we'll work with all the merchants downtown to have a dialogue conversation about that. Kathy, is there anything you want to add to that conversation?
I think the information, there was just a small number of people, but that we really need everybody's help to pay attention and to take care of their own businesses and let us do the best we can with the kinds of ideas that we came up with.
Right. So I'm looking forward to our next meeting, and hopefully, some of these are very cheap to implement. We're not trying to break the bank on doing some high-end stuff at this point in time, just again, to make it safer downtown, and we'll see what happens, but.
Probably a good point to mention, you mentioned lighting, and we're going to start the pilot. So, and when will that be, Nolan?
Well, last time at Duke Energy, it was like about four or six weeks.
Yeah, that's right. That's what they said last, yeah, Monday night.
Okay, so we'll start a pilot program to increase lighting in an area and see how, what kind of impact that makes, and then we'll use that as the launching point for what else we decide.
And the other thing that we've mentioned is a block by block. And Morgan, would you like to add anything about that? I know Greensboro Wilmington, I think, is using that concept, but.
I know a local merchant here in Burlington actually approached us about the program. They were aware of it, that they're using in Greensboro. And it's a service essentially that you contract with, and they're ambassadors in the downtown area. So they perform, it's kind of a menu. You can kind of choose what you want. But, so it's folks that are kind of walking around, are checking in with folks that are in the downtown area, whether they're homeless or not. And they have, it's not a uniform, but it's a fluorescent vest and walkie-talkies. So they have the appearance of, you know, someone that you could walk up to and ask a question. So there are a couple of different services with that. And they also can do cleaning in the downtown area, and they can do a little bit of landscaping and ground maintenance. So it's something that other communities use. And so we have a call on Friday, this Friday, the 8th, with the regional director. And at that, I think we're going to delve into kind of what's the Greensboro and Wilmington experience been, and then reach out to them. So we don't have an idea of kind of what cost for services, but it is a new and interesting program. It was actually Casey Lewis who approached us about it and was aware of it. So we're, I'm excited to find out. Peter's done a good job of tracking this regional director down, so.
Good, thank you, Maury. It was very productive. We'll continue on and keep the council in. The second thing I wanted to bring up, Mr. Mayor, was our staff does a wonderful job with the athletic fields, the soccer fields, baseball fields, outstanding. They're very protective of them in reference to rain, not allowing us to use those fields. And I appreciate that more than anyone. But also, I'd like to ask Tony if it's even feasible or possible to look into what it might cost us to turf maybe one or two of these fields so we continue to play when it. it rains a little bit. And I know Mevin has done this in the past, so I tipped Tony off last night that we were going to, I was going to be bringing this up, so, Tony.
Thank you, Councilmember Wall. Yes, Springwood Fields is where we play most of our soccer games, and due to the cost, we didn't put a drainage system in when we built that park. We spent about a million dollars to buy the property, and then about four to five million to develop what we got out there, so we didn't have a lot of money extra to do things like that. And unfortunately, the soil out there is native soil under the turf, and the native soil here has a lot of clay in it, and clay is not very porous, so the water stands and it doesn't drain through the soil like it should. We've looked at, we've had NC State up here, they're turf experts, three or four times to look at it, and the only permanent solution to fix that is to put a drainage system in, but that's very expensive, doing that, so we haven't attempted to do that. The turf fields that Councilmember Wall's talking about is artificial turf. A regulation soccer field is 80,000 square feet of space. Artificial turf sells for around $5 per square foot, so you're talking about forty thousand, I mean, $400,000 to put the turf in. And that doesn't count, the drainage has to go under that turf, which is about another 300,000, so about 700,000 for a regulation soccer field to put, and these are estimated costs, you know, they would have to ask somebody to look at it and figure exact cost, but somewhere in that neighborhood.
David, do you remember what it cost in Mevin to do?
It's expensive. It was, we built ours brand new, and just the grading and then the rock that goes on there, it was half to 600,000, and we built those four, probably four years ago.
Okay.
Half a million to 600,000, yeah.
Certainly, artificial turf would be an all-weather surface for us, and like Councilmember Wall said, we get a lot of complaints from our soccer coaches, parents, because, you know, we're trying not to tear up the fields. Soccer fields and other athletic fields are Bermuda turf, that's a warm season grass, it grows in the summer months, and then it has to last us the fall soccer season and the spring soccer season before it starts growing again in late May, early June. So it goes dormant in the first frost in the fall, so we're very careful, because we want to keep grass on the fields, you know, nobody wants to come out there and play on dirt and in the mud and so forth, so we're very careful about that, and try to make it last the nine months that that's not the growing season. So, but we try to accommodate as, you know, as many games as we can, but if the fields are too wet to play on, you put people out there playing, and they're running, and you're going to tear up the turf, and then that's when we're going to be in a better, worse shape than what we would be in if we.
And I appreciate that. I mean, I'm not complaining about not being able to play, I'm just trying to look at an alternative to that, trying to get a number, budget seasons coming around, so at least we could have some more conversation about it. But definitely not complaining.
There'd be a lot of people be happy if we had some turf, artificial turf out there.
And I appreciate you sharing the information as well, thank you.
If you really start adding up the list, and we talked about it very briefly at the work session a month ago, when you start talking about what we're going to need at the MAC, the lighting that we have that's going to have to be replaced at some of our ball fields, which is right 900,000 or a million dollars, am I saying that right? We're talking about the completion of the Moorefield Flores Building, what we talked about last night, which is recreation and parks. Now you're talking about this, and you're talking about an indoor rec center in West Burlington, if we're going to move in that direction. I mean, it's starting to stack up more and more, like we're going to need financing due.
We have David Cheek, I mean, he can figure it out. Right, David?
Sure.
Background in finance, figured out. We need about 800,000 times two, I mean, come on.
No, the thing out there is, at Springwood, it's multiple fields now, we're not talking about just one or two, obviously, that's a process, but in the past, in mostly across the state, parks and rec is now, the spending has got to an all-time high level because of youth. Recreation centers now have become, what used to be built in the seventies now have become an economic driver of the community. Communities smaller than us that matter, Kernersville, building a huge facility, Yerba, Belmont.
Moore County.
Moore County's built one. The town of Roseville is actually, to develop a downtown, there's agreement with private industry to come in and build the downtown, and they will build a recreation center, because their concept is having young and, say, middle-aged people who want a facility like that, and they can build a lot of housing in that area. So, you know, I, just from my experience, if we're looking at some of these major projects, I think we have to at least understand the need or potential concept of entertaining some type of bond package. That let the citizens determine, you know, what the, what might be the mission, but you put that out there, and the community votes on it. We've done it in the past, Conole Center was part of a bond package, if you recall. Davidson Park was, to some degree was, Springwood was not. But, you know, we're looking at some pretty large facilities here that's going to be upgraded or added. And the growth of the community is only increasing, and the demand, well, I think we increased for that also.
David, would it be possible for you guys to, for staff to put all these things, and then what, I'm sure there's probably a handful that we're not even talking about, get them on a document with what we're looking at, so we can start. My concern has always been that we're, as our residential growth continues, and it's grown, I mean, all you have to do is ride around and look at homes under construction and P and Z, what they're looking at on a continuous basis. We've got to stay ahead of recreational parks. We've got to stay ahead of it. We talk about youth solutions and what we can do in the community to keep kids out of trouble, and there's nothing more you can do than have things for them to do that are designed for the community to be involved in. And we have linked transit, so we now have inner-city transportation from one park to another, from one facility to another, so it doesn't matter what neighborhood you live in, you can get to a recreation and parks facility, and we need to invest in this. And I think that's, you know, we keep hearing little bits and pieces of what we need, what we need, well, what we need to do is put it all together, and let's address it head-on, and see if we can get something accomplished.
One other comment about the artificial turf. I don't want to leave you with the impression it's an end-all, cure-all for turf fields, because I've talked to people all over the United States in different climates, you know, dry climate, hot climate, all kinds of climates, and the life of artificial turf is about 10 years. So it wears and tears like everything else, depends on the amount of play you have on it, of course, and what kind of play it is. Soccer, football are pretty rough on turf, whether it's natural grass or artificial turf, versus baseball or softball on another grass surface. But, you know, if we went to that way, it wouldn't cost us as much to replace the turf as it would do it initially, but there will be cost of replacing down the road, too. We may get more than 10 years, it just depends on how well it holds up and how much play we have.
Are you asking for a dome now?
Not really.
Any other council comments?
I think there's some more things to go on that list, but I think that would be a good place to start.
There's no other council comments, I think there was a recommendation, David.
Yes, I would ask the council, I would ask the council, the work session, this time discussed the handling of certain claims, obviously, CBS 142, 187, 3, that includes following specific claims, Sarah Lee, City of Burlington, 20, CBS 302, Jennifer Markie, City of Burlington, CBS 1689, Dickford versus Front Police Department, 21, CBS 2331, Little Edith versus Central Division, 22, CBS 26, Matt Lawrence, EOC, claim number 435, 2021, 00488, Cindy Lackey, John Lackey versus City of Burlington, 21, CBS 302, Andrew Proctor, Carolina, LLC, and Al versus City of Brooklyn, and Al, 22, CBS 42.
Is there a motion?
No, I'm not.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I think we have a potential Eagle Scout in the audience that might want to be recognized.
Absolutely, you'll stand up and introduce yourself.
My name is Clay Thomas, and I'm with Trip 39.
Trip 39, and this is for merit badge for citizenship in the community, or what is it?
It is communication to hand community, citizenship in the community, so.
So we appreciate you hanging in here with us and being here all evening, we wish you the best. I have two young men, my two sons are Eagle Scouts, so very much support the program. Thank you for being here.
I want to thank the father also, the father involved in this thing.
As a proud dad, I'll say you would be the third generation Eagle Scout. Absolutely. Okay, this time we will, we did vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, this time we'll have a class session. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me if I'm down. I think we have a potential Eagle Scout in the audience that might want to recognize.
Absolutely. You'll stand up and introduce yourself?
I did turn it off.
It was good, right?
I'm trying to get it to understand the problem.
I didn't. Okay, got everybody here. Who would miss them? David, okay, we're going back. All right, is there a motion to go back into open session?
Go move.
A second. A motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Huffman, I think at this time you have a request for ratification.
I do. You know, this is a formal report to you of the settlement of the claims of Matt Lawrence against the city arising out of the city's 2025 motion process as more fully described in EEOC claim number 435-2021, page 00488, and in his grievance of September 10, 2020, which was phenomenal, that time the bill was filed, where I would ask that you approve the ratification agreement of September 16 that was put together pursuant to NCGS 168-16.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the ratification as requested?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's good, David, is there anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
Guarda. I think that concludes all of our business tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?